Happy New Year, everyone. A regular, and I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Trustees meeting at seven o'clock. And next item is invocation. Um, invocation tonight is, we had a lifelong resident of the village of North Hudson, Randy St. Norris. He was a firefighter for eighteen years in the Hudson Fire Department, lived here all his life, his family's here, and he passed this weekend, or late last week, I guess, and I'd just like everyone to please keep the family in their prayers. Brenda, Brianne, and Pat, and the grandkids, you know, and the brothers and sisters. So, please remember them in prayers. Randy was a, was a fun, fun guy, did a lot of stuff in the village, you know, master carpenter. So, we'll just have a moment of silence as we, you know, think about, I mean, that one of our, you know, public service people is no longer with us and helping his team, so... And roll call, please.
Trustee Head?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
O'Brien, Burgland?
Here.
Hank?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustee Zeiss?
Here.
Zappa?
Here.
Thank you. Item number two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of twenty-nine November twenty sixteen and special board meeting of twenty December twenty sixteen.
May I move approval?
Thank you, Colleen. Is there a second?
I'll second, Stan.
Thank you. Any discussions, amendments, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of the minute, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, item three, comments from the floor, opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topic issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. And I don't see anyone in the gallery for comments, so we'll go on to item four, which is amended class parent B slash parent class B liquor license for extended premises, Cozy Corner, St. Croix Valley, Rota Rack Beanbag Tournament for Saturday, twenty-eighth January, approval requested.
Stan, I'll move that the class parent B slash parent class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages, intoxicating liquors for Cozy Corner be temporarily amended for an event taking place on Saturday, January twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, from eight a.m. to ten p.m. with the following conditions. Number one, area outside of building to be completely enclosed with a continuous fence and accessed only from within the building. Number two, use of alcohol shall remain within building or fenced in area per the establishment's liquor license. Number three, use of outside area only with specific permission of the village board for requested date and times. Number four, owner to provide an equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot areas fenced during time of event. Number five, owner to be responsible for band slash music volume.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Any further questions, questions, comments? Hearing none.
Stan, I'll sustain from the vote.
Thank you, Kirk. Uh, any, or so, all in favor of the amendment for amended class or extended premises, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item five, new business from the board of staff. Just President's comments at first, and wanted to say again, Happy New Year. I hope everybody has a safe, healthy, prosperous New Year. We have had some problems. I'd like the, the community to help us in solving. We, with our sewer system, we have systems of pumps to move stuff through the pipes and, and to get it down to the sewer down in Hudson, and we've been having trouble with we thought were mop heads in somebody putting into the, into the sewer system, but we've determined that it's very possibly, they're called flushable wipes, and they apparently get caught up in the, the motor, the fans and, or, you know, the pump, and cost us a lot of money. So, yes, they're flushable in your toilet, but when they get to the, you know, to the pumps and the lift stations, they cau, they're causing us a lot of extra cost when they, you know, they tie them up, so the, so the pump doesn't work. So, please, if you're using flushable wipes, we really appreciate it to, you know, put them in your garbage rather than, uh, into the, you know, the sewer system. I mean, that's a, it's something that, you know, is, is very costly when we have to start replacing pumps in these lift stations. And then the other thing is fire hydrants. I mean, if you have fire hydrants in your, your neighborhood and stuff like that, please keep them shoveled out. We've been blessed with not too much snow so far this year, but, uh, it is something that if, if our department has to come, you're gonna wanna have those, so they don't have to shovel them out. And we have a great public works crew, and they have been doing a fabulous job. I want to say thank you, Patrick, and for your team that has done a great job on, on the, plowing the streets and stuff, but it's not really their responsibility. It's, it's the homeowners in the area in order to take care of a hydrant, so you could help us out with that. That'd be great. We have a, a new crew or a young crew on, or new to the, to the village, anyway, for taking care of the streets and anything we can do, and your patience would be appreciated when, if we don't get to your house, you know, you know, it's, we're working on it. It's a, it's something that, it takes a little time to learn the system and stuff. So, keep your fire hydrants, mailboxes shoveled out, and I'll go to Gloria. Administrator?
No comments at this time.
No comments tonight? Okay. Melissa, do you have any comments?
Yes. Um, Christmas tree pickup started yesterday and will occur on the following two Mondays, January ninth and January sixteenth. Residents must have trees curbside by six-thirty a.m. Additional information can be found on the village website. Also, the deadline for filing paperwork to be on the ballot for the spring election was today at five o'clock p.m. A total of four individuals, two of them being incumbents, Mark Zappa and Kirk Nelson, filed paperwork for the three open village trustee positions. Incumbent Stan Wecken filed paperwork for village president, and incumbent Ben Wopat filed for municipal judge. There were no additional filings for village president or municipal judge.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, uh, let's see, item number six, plan commission, I don't believe they met. And so, item number seven, personnel and finance committee recommendations, first one is claims approval.
Stan, I move to approve the December two thousand sixteen non-recurring claims of thirty thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and fourteen cents, and the January two thousand seventeen non-recurring claims of two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven cents for a total of thirty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Uh, any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, suspending issue, I think we'll start with Tim.
Yes.
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 Thank you. You can handle those votes, I like those. Uh, item B is village engineering service contract, Cedar Corp, approval requested.
Stan, I'd like to approve the, um, contract with Cedar Corp going through two thousand, December two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Colleen. Is there any questions or comments?
Comment?
Here.
Apparently, somebody asked Terry Dunst about liability for mistakes.
Right.
Um, I'll tell you more about the law than you wanna know, but there's two bodies of law. One is what we call tort, which is mistakes and negligence, and the other is contract. Usually mistakes are covered by tort law, not by the contract law. There's nothing in this contract that affects liability for mistakes one way or another. It doesn't assume liability for mistakes, it doesn't deny liability for mistakes. It's the same as your agreement with Baki Norman, whether it's written or verbal, if we make a mistake, we're responsible for it, if, if it's our negligence and it caused you damage. That's the situation with this contract. So, I, I think as is is just fine in that respect. But, you're dealing with a contract that I guess is coming upon eighteen years old, and there have been addendums and, and some, I don't have all of them, maybe they don't exist, but if somebody were to try to figure out what is the current contract, you'd have to go back and see whether the amendments were amended. Uh, I don't have any problem if you wanna extend it, but soon somebody ought to redraft it, so you got a new one that's clean and you, you don't have to go through eighteen years of amendments to figure out what you agreed to.
I have a question for you. Cedar Corp had let us know that we are only one of two of their clients that have contracts. Why would others not have contracts?
I know, do you have a contract with Baki Norman?
Yes.
You do?
Well, don't we?
I doubt it, but maybe you do.
Well, we have a...
Fee arrangement?
Yeah.
We have a fee arrangement.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with having a contract or not. The, the rules, the legal obligations are pretty clear. This contract does add something, and that is it specifies who in the hierarchy of the village has authority to authorize certain expenditures. Like, there's a list of people that can authorize things up to a thousand dollars or up to fifteen hundred dollars without having to have a board meeting. Well, that's kinda nice, but, uh, I, I don't think anything's gonna change if you don't have a contract, but if you like one, they can type it up.
I was just wondering if there's an advantage to it.
But I, I do suggest that you retype it, because eighteen years of amendments gets pretty confusing.
I agree.
So, would that be something we would have Terry or your firm do, or would that be through Cedar Corp?
Well, if, if they do it, then we don't charge you for it, if they type it up, and we'll look at it.
Okay.
But you're saying that we don't really need a contract, we don't need anything more than a fee schedule from them, and we'd be fine.
That's correct. That's correct. You know, the contract is terminable on ninety days' notice, that's the current one, and if things aren't going well, you're gonna terminate contract and get a different engineer, and that's true whether you got a contract or not, you know, it's, they have to keep you happy.
I think it's a vestige from old days where engineering firms wanted a contract, and the village, I, my recollection of it was, they felt secure in having two years' worth of work, if you will, with a entity, and, um, based on what's being said, I, is all valid, but I think the history of it is just, well, we've had a contract with them, which is basically elaborate, or a, a fee schedule that's concrete.
Right.
But the, the liability aspect that we were worried before is, is implicit in the arrangement.
Right.
Regardless of the contract, if I understand you correctly. So, I guess if there isn't a lot to get a contract cleaned up when we go, then I don't, at this point, we might as well just do it again.
What's the engagement about it? Is the statement of work, you just call them up and, and the type of level to bring them on? I mean, and do you document all that activity as far as how long they've been here and everything?
Four.
Well, I mean, you got the hourly rate, I mean, so when you, if, we need to have them come, do you have a draw up a statement of work and say this, the work we done and all that stuff?
Usually, if there's a project, there's a...
Project driven.
Correct. Project driven.
We do a lot of...
Extra.
A lot of, I guess, yeah, extra things that we don't charge for, like all your meetings that we attend.
That's it, yeah.
Public Works, Plan Commission, Village Board, we don't charge for those. It's just a service that we provide.
Right. Well, I'm going back to the contract side of it. If you don't, you don't need a contract, then why would you wanna enter a contract?
Say that again?
If you don't need the contract, and they're questioning to us why we would, would have a contract, I mean, their billing of rates is, you know, what they're charging us at that point, I mean, it's something that's knowledge.
Well, you know, for instance, Baki Norman Law Firm uses the services of certified public accountants regularly. We don't have a contract. I mean, we probably have an oral contract, they tell us what they're gonna charge us, and we believe them.
Well, let me ask you this, Kevin, if, if there wasn't a contract, would you guys continue to show up at meetings gratis to provide support?
We would. I mean, we do that in all the communities, it's just a service that we provide, so...
But you don't normally?
I'm guessing...
But we're not bound to use them if we have to, even with the contract.
Right.
It's not an exclusive contract.
Why wouldn't we just have a fee schedule from them then and just be done with this vestige from the past, if you will?
I'm guessing that when you send out a bill, you don't go back and look at the contract and see what it says?
Again, a lot of us, you know, we're all driven by project-specific, you know, we
come up with a cost estimate, and then it's usually fifteen percent of that number is what we work off for design and construction. You know, there's a lot of other things that we just kinda provide as a service to the community.
And those services aren't written in any contract at all, are they?
No, those, yeah, that, that agreement that's in place is all basically project-specific.
Right, that's right.
Well, if we don't even need a contract.
The original agreement was actually grabbing it up by the bill way back when in ninety-nine. So, that, that's kinda where it all comes from.
Yeah, ninety-nine.
So, just for my clarification, if there's no contract, we still have indemnification if something was done wrong? Is that, is that a correct statement?
We have our own liability insurance, it's up to three million dollars, so, I mean, it's cost of doing business, I mean, that's just something that we would have to provide.
Yeah, all, all your service providers are gonna have professional liability insurance, and that's certainly true. And the contract doesn't, doesn't cover that one way or another. That's a negligence issue.
Right, right.
If they screw up, they're responsible. If I screw up, I'm responsible, I mean, that's...
Yep, yep. I just wanted to make sure we were clear.
Then what are we covering with the contract, then?
Well, that's where you have to go back and look at nineteen ninety-nine, what the original agreement was, to see what's all in there.
It's on, in your...
And, and we got it, and we, and we had them look at it.
Well, based upon what I see, you've been dealing without a contract since two thousand twelve, maybe?
We've been doing it every two years, is what it is.
You may not, I think I sent two groups, and the, the years that were missing, Terry probably got after that group.
Okay. Well, even if you do it every two years, it's on one year of redo, so you got one, or you're doing it...
It's been for two years, is what it's...
Okay.
Does it matter to your firm whether we have the contract? Are you saying it came from us to start with?
It did. That's my understanding back in nineteen ninety-two.
Okay.
It was something the village wanted.
Well...
There was less stable engineering environment.
Okay, well, seems like our attorneys answered the question about the whole liability, and that's...
Yeah.
No issue, so then...
I think it's a push.
Do we look at just going to a...
What sort of liability do we have with a con, contract that's, if they don't tighten it up and get it back to us, what are the negative consequences for us?
Well, I, I suppose there's some question about what the fee schedule is. If you don't have it in writing, it's quote reasonable, and people can argue about what that is, but if it's unreasonable, they lose a client.
Yeah, we, you know, every January, February, we, you know, adopt our hourly rates, and that'll be coming up here shortly, but, and we typically provide a copy of that to the village, so they have that on record, per se, and I think there's something in the packets of, you know, the hourly rates.
Yeah, it's there.
So, really, we could be approving the contract and then the fee schedule changing anyway, because of the timing?
Yeah, it's, it usually goes up about three or four years. And again, it, you know, and again, we're more project-specific, and a lot of the hourly rate things don't really play, play out, per se, 'cause it's, it's based on construction.
So, why wouldn't we just do away with the contract and go to approving when they come out with their hourly rates each year, the new hourly rates?
I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with that. I think most municipalities don't have written contracts with their professional, you know, their CPAs, their engineers, their lawyers.
We go out for a bit, or proposal.
Yeah.
And we've done that two years ago for engineering, our, uh, accountants, our CPA firm, so...
So, do we want a contract?
Lance, why are we getting that, why are we getting this now?
It, it came up because the contract was being renewed.
No, no, but this, we postponed it for a month, but I, at the final answer, we didn't...
We wanted to have the liability thing answered.
Okay.
That's what slowed it down.
With or without a contract, the liability doesn't change. If they're negligent and it costs you money, they're responsible for it, just like if I screw up and cost you money, I'm responsible for it. That's our profession, and they've obviously got insurance, as any good professional's gonna have insurance to cover that liability, so...
Well, did we have a motion and everything on the...
We had the motion and the second, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh...
Can we amend it?
If we don't...
Withdraw it.
...need the contract, this is the first time I've gone with it.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I did, it's...
I would rather just wait till they come out with their new fee schedule and then deal with it, and get rid of it.
Okay, so we can table this then until the fee schedule comes out. Is it on, correct, or? We can table this until the next meeting.
You can do that.
You can table it again.
You've got a motion that doesn't have a second at this point.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll just move this on to, once we get a schedule.
So, we're just, just gonna adopt a fee schedule then, it's kind of not gonna do with the contract, per se?
Well, it's a word.
We're leaning towards...
You're, you're comfortable with that, I take it.
Yeah, I mean, like I brought it up for, in the following communities, I worked with roughly thirty-some communities, only have two of them contract, one of them being...
Yeah, you know, actually, you guys have got all the leverage, because whatever disputes there, they aren't gonna be anywhere near as important as those guys having a continuing client. So, you, you've got, you've got the leverage.
Yeah.
Okay, so when's that fee schedule come out?
Uh, we actually adopt the rates at the end of the month.
End of the month?
Yeah.
So, normally, we'll start looking at February to adopt the new rates, that sounds like.
Yeah. You don't know what the benefit of adopting the fee schedule is, truthfully.
Should the board know? Okay. I mean, what if they decided to jump at thirty percent? We'd wanna know that.
Well, it's, it's all really based, too, on the, the project, and...
Yeah, it, it, like you said, it's project-driven, and we've never had an issue as long as they've done it. I, I won't dispute it, but this is...
So, well, do we even need a fee schedule? Is that what we're saying? 'Cause it's project-based, anyway.
That's, that's how we work it.
Yeah, I, I, this is getting to be more than, that's why I say, why is this, right now, being, you know, the contract not needing one at all is...
It came back to the whole...
A separate issue, and I don't, I think, discuss...
This goes back into the summer, doesn't it? The whole question about in...
Liability, we're talking about now having a contract, period.
Yeah, liability, that came...
Well, it would've expired in December.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not disputing any of the directions, I'm just saying, right now, I think if we just wait a month and, for just general purposes, if nothing else.
Yeah, just let me comment about that also, if they send you a fee schedule, you don't have to approve it, you don't have to contract it. If you don't like the fees, you don't hire them to do that, you hire somebody else.
We've been down that road, I get that part. We've also negotiated fees with people, too.
So, it goes back to Gloria's position, essentially, then, on the negotiations about the fees?
No, it'll be, it'll be...
It still comes to us?
Sure it does, yeah. I mean, if, if she brings it to us as an issue, or if, say, they double their rates, then it's time to look for somebody else.
Okay, yes.
We would pass that if we...
No, no, I just say if, I, I'm just, I find the, you know, I...
Okay. Okay, this'll be moved to another date and time when we have the fee schedule and, and we can talk offline about the, the need or not need of having a contract. It sounds like, I just should not have a contract.
Okay, let, let me make one other comment, and that is, their hourly rate isn't anywhere near as important as how they record their hours, and that's certainly true for a lawyer.
I was gonna say, that sounds like a lawyer thing, you're in there.
Well, you're not there when I'm doing the work.
Yeah.
You weren't there when I prepared for tonight.
Right.
Whatever I wrote down, you were stuck with, and the hourly rate isn't anywhere near as important as my honesty. I'm sure, and that's true there, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's a relationship, you have to...
Okay, so that one is moved to a later date. Next is item C, revised public works director job description approval requested.
Stan and I move that we approve the revised village director of public works job description.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Kirk? Was it Ted? Okay, sorry, I can't, uh, okay, is there any discussions, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the, you know, the revised public works director job description, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Saying thank you. Uh, then twenty seventeen, North Hudson Staff and Equipment Service Rates, this is a, you know, rates in case the citizens of the village or whatever, or somebody would care to use our staff and, and equipment, uh, that's the rates that we would charge, so we have a motion.
I move to approve the service rates for twenty seventeen.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there a second?
Second.
Was it Kirk? Thank you. Uh, any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the rates change, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Um, I noticed we have a guest that, I'm gonna go back to comments from the floor. We have our, our county rep, board representative is here from, uh, to maybe give us a little update on what's happening in the county. I always appreciate it when Tom shows up, and if you would check the podium, 'cause...
Well, we had our monthly meeting this morning at nine o'clock and finished up in a couple hours, it was pretty routine, and, uh, so far, there've been a small minority of us that have blocked any further borrowing on the part of the county. We have two-point-eight million dollars in reserves, which we're spending on capital improvements, and some of the people in the county, the county administrator, among others, wanna spend another, well, they proposed initially six-point-five million dollars in additional borrowing. So far, we've been able to block that, and, and their last proposal was to borrow an additional one-point-five million dollars in addition to the two-point-eight million we're taking from reserves. And they need fifteen voits, votes, they need a supermajority to borrow that, so, there aren't, they couldn't get them, and we had three people absent today from the meeting, so there weren't fifteen votes available. So, any rate, it turns out there are fifteen, there're gonna be some people absent from our February meeting, we already find out now, so they wanna change the voting procedure so these people can phone in their votes. So, any rate, just so you know, it's not something I'm really in favor of, I'm not in favor of borrowing any more money, anyway, but, 'cause we're already living beyond our means. But, the additional thing that was a little disturbing is the chairman of the administration committee also brought up that he wants to implement a living wage requirement for all vendors doing business with the county, and, and he said he would have proposed a proposal to ban plastic bags, except that... except that Governor Walker already signed a bill banning any further bans on plastic bags. So we've got a number of issues that are going to be challenging the next couple of months, just so you're aware. And I expect there's going to be a lot of back and forth in the newspaper and other venues about this because it's a little bit beyond. I think he's outkicked his coverage. I hope so.
What's the cost of living wage being proposed?
Not determined yet, but Eau Claire County has implemented a similar kind of thing, and so that's the model that's being proposed here. So besides being, in my view, besides being an administrative nightmare, I don't believe in putting the lowest rung on the ladder further out of reach for more people who are the neediest and the least qualified. They need to get a start so they can go on to the next rungs. So I didn't start out worth the twenty-five bucks an hour I get now on the board. So I had to learn.
How much?
Hell, I had to run for that show.
Yeah.
That changes everything.
I'm averaging.
Yeah.
I'm averaging. I know you're higher-valued here, so good for you.
For the love of the village.
Yeah, so any rate, just so you know, that's part of what's coming down the pike. It's going to be interesting. It's going to be fun. I don't think that, I think this is a little nuts to let people phone in their votes. I just don't think that's going to fly with the, I don't know, I haven't taken a poll. But I don't think that's going to fly with the board, so. But it never hurts to call the other people you know on that board and see what the heck is going on here.
Yeah, no. They have rest. I mean, that's, the county is a big taxing entity. I mean, they were nice this time, you know, with our tax bills that we all got, you know, but, I appreciate it.
Other additional thing is that we're still not licensed at our new healthcare center for the ten-bed dementia care end of it. And we still have to go through heightened scrutiny of federal government's requirement. And we don't even know what that looks like because it's a new Obama administration-introduced requirement that we go through that, and every facility has to go through that. And we don't even know what that means. We don't know if it's twenty guys with white gloves and clipboards or what it looks like. So we don't have, we aren't eligible for Medicaid reimbursement at the nursing home for those ten beds. And we won't be for the forty beds in the now being remodeled old section of the old nursing home that's being remodeled. So until we go through the same, you know, twenty guys with clipboards and white gloves program. So whatever that looks like.
No Medicaid reimbursement for the dementia beds?
Right, which means that all the people applying for, to reside in the home, in those beds, it'd be fifty beds total, will need to demonstrate the ability to pay for their care for two to three years in order to be admitted. So, which is a contrast to the way the nursing home was originally promoted and proposed, that it was going to be a place for poor people to go. So, and frankly, I'm not getting good answers about any of that in terms of no, and to be fair, nobody knows really what that looks like because nobody's been through it before. But the board that, and I wasn't on the board when they decided to do this, but they were warned that this was going to be a requirement to go through this heightened scrutiny. That's what they call it, in order to get eligible for Medicaid reimbursement for patients who reside there. So any rate, just some more good news from your county. So thanks for the opportunity.
Always a pleasure, Tom, and thank you for keeping us up to speed. I mean, because the paper a lot of times isn't showing what's going on up there anymore. I mean, the paper doesn't, they used to show up here, too, and, you know, so, you know, we want to use every source we can in order to keep people, you know, abreast of what's going on, so
Sure.
We much appreciate you coming, filling us in.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, back, we're up to now, Public Works Committee Chair update. Brian?
I, we are looking at purchasing a new snowplow for the first time in, actually, never asked how far back, but for a long time. And our public, interim public works director has done a lot of research and received different quotes, and then went into conversations with Stinkright County Highway Department, Hudson Public Works Department about the type of truck. And we were looking at an International originally, and he, through his research and discussion, has come up with a Mack truck, which will hold its value much longer. And we are told by the experts, and will have a greater resale value, less maintenance. And so I have a recommendation, basically. And I am moving to approve the purchase of a twenty seventeen Mack plow truck from Nuss Truck and Equipment with purchase amount not to exceed two-hundred thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion?
I think it was sixteen years, Brian.
Was it? Sixteen years.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, well, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of author, I mean, to approve a purchase of a new snowplowing truck, oh, not spending, so Kirk?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 unanimous, thank you. Next is authorization for village administrators solicit loans.
Stan, in connection with the purchase of the truck, I move that the village administrator be authorized to solicit bids from local and state lending institutions for a loan to fund the purchase of a public works snowplow truck in an amount not to exceed two-hundred thousand, to be repaid between five and ten years. Loan will incorporate provisions for two loan payments per year, with the first payment due in March and second in September, and no prepayment penalties.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, says we're going to buy a truck, then we're going to prove Gloria to find us the best rate we can possibly get. And the rates are low, but they could be climbing. So, and this is just an authorization, so everybody in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Item nine, public safety. Mark?
We didn't meet in December
Thank you.
In the report.
Item ten, Public Welfare Committee. Colleen?
We didn't meet, and neither did Park Board. But the next Park Board meeting is Thursday, since they have been changed to Thursdays from Monday.
Okay. And, well, be darned, this shows that we would be adjourned at seven forty. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.